Let me ask the council members of their seats, please. Let me call this regular meeting of the North Little Rock City Council to order, and Ms. Whitby, please call the row.
Yes, sir. Gibson?
Present.
Bryant?
Present.
Robinson?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Berry?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Hyatt is out of town. Witcher?
Present.
Ms. President, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Let's stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman Berry, followed by the pledge by Alderman Parker. Bow our heads, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, you thank us again for being here, to come to this forum and bring the forefront of our community. Please allow us to do the things that are right and the things, and listen to everyone who's here. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please for adoption of the minutes, special and regular.
Motion made and seconded that the minutes of the regular and special meeting of April the 10th be approved and submitted. Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Can I go to the communications and ask for the blanket motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second? Any one of items one through six, any council member care to have pulled?
Mayor, I want to call attention to one of mine, the one I filed, and it's in this stack. I think it's probably-
Five.
Number five.
Yeah.
All right, one, all, one through six excluding five, on the motion?
Ma- ma- I'm sorry, Mayor, we may need to do six separately instead of hearing for it.
All right, one through four excluding five and six, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Did you read Alderman Gibson's number five by title and see what his pleasure is?
Yes, sir. It is a letter regarding a proposed ordinance that pertains to prohibiting access to residential property across curbs and sidewalks and requesting a public hearing.
Mayor, the purpose of this is to give you advance notice that I'll be bringing this in. Two neighborhood meetings this week, and I got not taken, I guess drug is probably a better way, to come look at houses to where people, we have new sidewalks on several areas through there, and we're already losing the curbs because people are jumping them, jumping the curbs to park in their front yard. And all I simply, I want to try to work on is some method of where people enter and leave their yard through a designated place. And the legislation attached to this will be filed for the next meeting, do a public hearing, the first public hearing on May 22nd, and we'll try to work our way through it. If we do pass this, I would at least probably, it would not be an emergency clause on it. It would probably go into effect like three months after we pass it, so we would have an opportunity to give people notice. But it's not fair, it's not fair to a lot of people, but, but it's really a shame that you build nice curbs and gutters in good neighborhoods, and there's one, as I came down today, that there's a plumbing truck, a big plumbing truck that jumped a curb, and you can already see where part of that curb is going. So.
I hear a motion to accept and file. Is there a second?
Second. Mayor, may I pick up on his comments? A longtime friend of mine, Lonnie Gibbons, has called me a couple of times regarding cars parked in the driveway, and ordinarily, Mr. Hyatt would pick this up and carry it, but since he isn't here tonight, it's becoming particularly a problem in a lot of our neighborhoods as children move back in and as we accumulate vehicles. And I know we've been through this before, we had difficult passing legislation before, but if there's something we can do about vehicles parked in yards, we need to address that in some form or fashion.
Alderman, Thomas?
I guess the only thought I had, at my house, we have a roll curb, and it's just a roll curb there. It's not the, not the standard curb that we do today, and that's the only way we have of getting in. There's no sidewalk, but you-
But you do have a designated driveway. You have a driveway that goes onto it.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the point we're making on it, is that if you look at that roll curb when they built them originally, supposedly they're stronger at that point.
They never broke, no.
But that'd make any difference, but I'm really more concerned where we have horizontal curbs, and we got a sidewalk, and you go by there, and there's a vehicle parked on top of that sidewalk who's jumped that curb. Mr. Witcher, I guess I'll ask one other question that came out of this meeting Thursday night, is we have in historic districts where that, that district can vote to not have parking in front yards already. And the question being is, can we create other districts to where the people come bring a petition in and say, on this stretch of street, there'll be no parking in, in front of the, in front of the houses, or on the yard, other than a surface that's been made for that? And that's the thought that they asked me to address. We've got some, some instances that, we've got certain parts of my ward that are not all below the hill, and some of them above the hill, where we have way too many people living in way too little of a space, where you'll have what was originally a garage apartment behind there, and all of a sudden, you've got six cars and there's room for two.
Motion made and seconded, accept and file on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number six?
Yeah, go ahead and read that by title. I understand you're saying that I need, we need to call a public hearing on that. Is that what I hear?
I believe that's the case, isn't it?
Let's see the attorney slash candidate.
Chase.
All right. Correct on the candidate or correct on the public hearing? All right, with that, read it by title, please.
A petition for formation of a property owners improvement district. It would be the Cypress Crossing Multipurpose Municipal Property Owners Improvement District, number 26, and it was filed by Bob Hindon.
Please accept and file and place in a public hearing.
And is that tonight or next council meeting?
I think it needs to be set as long as notice is given.
The next, I'm assuming the next meeting, it's something about 15 days from when the mayor receives it? Right.
All right, so the next council meeting or-
I've, I've got a question.
Okay, just a second. Let me find out what I'm supposed to do.
All right.
So the next council meeting?
Well, the next council meeting will be the 10th, so that's more than 15 days.
Eight.
Are they eight?
Yeah, that's, and actually, that's 14 days from today, and if you received, I don't know when you received this.
Today.
I'd be on the safe side and set it for next meeting.
All right, yeah, we'll set it for the, for second council meeting of next month?
Twenty-fourth.
What day is that?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. There'll be 7:05, public hearing on this issue, the 24th of, of-
Monday's the 22nd, so.
Twenty-second, isn't it?
Twenty-second, sorry.
Monday, the 22nd of May. I'll tell you what, uh, twenty, not, not, because there may be some discussion about, you know, postponing that 22nd meeting. Why don't we just say the second council meeting of, of May, whatever day that falls on. I know it's, it's set for the, the, oh, it does say second, no, all right, the second council meeting of, of May. With that, we'll go ahead and-
Yeah.
Move to accept and file and set it on the second council meeting of next month.
Yeah, and that, we just need to make sure we coordinate with the petitioners so that whenever we get notice filed in the paper, they get the proper date.
Right, okay.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
I've noticed that the people that are on the board of the improvement district are the people that are developing it. I don't know what, I mean, I don't understand.
That's the common practice.
Okay. Thank you.
On the motion to accept and file and set the public hearing for the second council meeting of May. On the motion?
Need a second?
Second.
Alderman Witcher, seconds. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
I think most of us realize that we did have a public hearing. There's none noted at this timeframe, but we do have several presentations, and let me welcome a, not a new resident, a year or better resident of the city of North Little Rock, Colonel Wally Walters, who is the resident in charge of the Little Rock Corps of Engineers office. I've grown to know him. His daughter serves on the mayor's youth council. We not only appreciate his work and what we do as a partner with the Corps of Engineers, but we also appreciate his residency and, and in addition, his daughter's volunteer work through the mayor's youth council. I've gotten to know Colonel Walters, and, and he's indeed a pleasure and a joy to work with on a variety of fronts, and we welcome him to the city council. He made a presentation to the city of Little Rock several weeks ago and wants to share with us a variety of things, as we have a variety of interests in conjunction with our district office for the U.S. Corps of Engineers. Colonel Walters, welcome to the North Little Rock City Council chamber, and, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, it's good to be with you here. It's not very often I get the chance to share a stage with a photo cut out of Representative of the Daisies, so I've been glad to be here. Of course, the real reason I'm glad to be here is because we work with you and are a part as well of your community and a chance to talk about it. I delight in being a resident and homeowner here in North Little Rock, especially to be able to talk to you all this evening, and talk to you about the Corps of Engineers, what we do more broadly in Arkansas, but quite specifically about a, about a half dozen issues involving directly North Little Rock. And, and that's kind of how this brief will play out, about 15, 18 slides, which will talk initially to some of those broader roles and then get into some of the North Little Rock specifically, especially related to the development of the Arkansas River waterfront, both here in North Little Rock and throughout the central Arkansas area. And bottom line up front, I want you to know that I encourage my technical staff to work closely with your staffs and the staffs of Little Rock as well, to find good solutions for future development, as well as balancing the needs of environment and other things here in the area. And we're ready to, and are, meeting with your folks to talk about those issues on a regular basis and to see them forward. And I see some of the other presentations tonight are going to show you, show some of the many citizens here, some of the kinds of things you already have in mind, and about which we're working with you, and we, we take pleasure and pride in being able to do that on the way forward. All of my staff are part of your community, or the community across the river as well, and they're residents and homeowners and so forth, so they, they are a part of the community as well as representing the federal role, as the, supporting me as the district engineer of the Little Rock District Army Corps of Engineers. All right, let's see if we can get the slides to work here. The, the Little Rock District, we have what we call military and civil works missions. Our military mission is principally military construction. It's assigned to cover the entire state of Arkansas. Our civil works mission, shaded in green on the slide, includes parts of the Arkansas, White Little River basins in Arkansas, and also Southern Missouri. Core districts are organized by watersheds. As a result, our Vicksburg district covers the southeast portion of the state, and a district in Memphis extends across the eastern and northeastern watersheds, covering the area principally serving the Mississippi River. Although, as you can see from the diagram, the Arkansas River all the way down to Montgomery Point falls on our jurisdiction. As I think about this area and its importance now and for the future, I'm very optimistic for its future because of the three features that stand out. The Arkansas River, the environment of the natural state, and the hills, specifically the two mountain ranges that are in the area. The two ranges are like an island in a sea of plains and prairie, with the Arkansas River Valley cutting a swath between them. And there's nothing really like that, like the Ozarks and the Washington Hills, for several hundred miles around it. And I don't think most people even who live here appreciate that fact and its implications. Historically, that meant that settlers went around it and avoided it, to go where they could plant crops or head for California, what have you, and get crops to market via rivers, then successfully to railroads and highways. And there's not a lot of that navigable through the hills, but nonetheless, now, that, that is what is the big draw for people to come visit and for people to, to come reside here in Arkansas. And the river serves that purpose. Of course, we have in conjunction with that a spectacular environment, some of it very precious, as represented by the example of the Ivory Bill Woodpecker and, and the bottom land hardwoods, some of it precious in other ways. We have a lake up in Missouri known as Clearwater, but we could have put the same title for an awful lot of other facilities out there. North Little Rock, along with Little Rock, is truly the gateway to these hills, to the Ozarks. The water resources, infrastructure, and transportation systems are a key enabler for this to continue. Competition for this infrastructure will continue to grow as the population grows and the uses diversify. And we see that every day now, whether the, that's a contest between hydropower or navigation or fishing. We balance and play a role in those conflicts. Right now, we manage about $6.5 billion in current dollars in civil facilities throughout Arkansas and Missouri, and this infrastructure will set the basis for a lot of future development. Navigation and flood reduction. The McClellan-Cur Arkansas River Navigation System is a year-round transportation alternative that extends 445 miles from the Mississippi out to Tulsa, Oklahoma. The shipments on this river continue to grow. This is not the case for, for other river systems, such as the Missouri, and this is not about competition, it goes to a different place, rather, it's a comparison, where the annual tonnage is stagnant and declining principally because they cannot secure a year-round system because of the level of water and the design of the system. What makes the Arkansas River system different is its engineering. It's a series of pools, as most of you are aware, a system backed by 18 locks and dams, each worth hundreds of millions of dollars of public investment, that make it reliable year-round. Before the locks and dams were built, the river often dropped to a trickle, meandering through sandbars. You could wade across it. And of course, it also had the problem of flooding. The locks and dams have created this reliable navigation, but also provides substantial other benefits in commercial, recreational, cultural, and to include waterfront development. During 2005, 12.9 million tons of cargo were shipped on the river, worth about $3.7 billion on the system. This is the equivalent of taking 500,000 trucks off of Interstate 40, a goal I know we all share. The waterway has additional capacity for the future, while the highway, the highway system and the rail systems capacities are to a degree limited. Flood reduction, hydropower and recreation or other purposes that our system serve. The district has 12 other dams, high-head dams for flood reduction, for example, Gears Ferry. These work with federal levees, which are also throughout the state area, and have prevented about $1.6 billion in damages since being built. They protect communities, but they, they have also freed downstream farms and other users from perennial losses of crops. Electricity is increasingly an important purpose and one controversial topic, as I know that you have taken up today. We produce a lot of electricity at our dams. Some of it is sold to cities and electric, electric cooperatives, and others is resold on the grid. We also support other utilities in addition to the dams we run, including one by North Little Rock up at Murray Dam. On average, our seven hydro plants generate enough electricity to power a quarter million households. And a larger, and that's particularly important because a lot of this serves peak demand, when there's just not enough capacity in the rest of the system. This meant 2 million barrels of oil not used, and it comes without greenhouse gas emissions. The lakes serve recreational purposes such as tourism. The tour, our recreation sites constitute about 70% of the available campsites in the state, and draw between 25 and 30 million visitors a year, who spend somewhere in the neighborhood of a billion dollars in the vicinity of our projects, and support tens of thousands of jobs across many purposes. We're also involved in water supply, disaster response, and disaster response. Our water supply storage is included in 11 of these projects, and with 23 direct agreements with cities, water districts, and the like, supporting about 313 million gallons of water a day. We've got more requests pending. The process does not go fast, in part because there's a limited amount of discretion Congress has given us, and we're careful how we use it. Right now, we have 13 utilities in central Arkansas that have joined together, including that that serves North Little Rock, that is explored using Gears Ferry and Lake Washington to meet future needs, and we are working with them presently. We're also responsible to prevent, prepare for, and respond to all manner of disasters and emergencies. We work for FEMA when we do this, in the Department of Homeland Security within the United States, to assist local governments as they abide through the provision of water, ice, roofing, power, debris removal, building demolition, and public infrastructure repairs. We are not the first responder, rather, we are the backup responder to the state, which of course is responding to you, to you as the community or the county behind you. We are currently supporting Arkansas communities after this spring's killer tornadoes. We're currently facilitating the emplacement of housing up in, in the Marmaduke area. We have also got, have been supporting recovery in the Gulf states. About 20% of our workforce has served in rotations down there. Most prominently, our Arkansas River Maintenance Crew, which I sent down there immediately after the storm hit New Orleans, and along with some crews from the Dutch and the Germans and our, our, the other crew that works the river with us out of Tulsa, they are the ones who dewatered the city of New Orleans by, by removing the water from the pumping stations, making them functional and allowing that. And as you may have noted, that went very, very well. The initial estimate was 84 days to dewater the city of New Orleans, and the people from here did it in about 30, and then got to do it again, at least in part, when Hurricane Rita struck. Some real, real American heroes, a part of your community here. We also, of course, as I noted, have military mission, supporting the Army, the Air Force, and military operations directly. We do the engineering, construction, and real estate support for Pine Bluff, Little Rock Air Force Base, Fort Chaffee, and the Army Reserve and Recruiting Offices from all branches. We also play a role in the global war on terrorism. We have sent more than two, four dozen employees to the Middle East and have some there currently. Thousands more from the rest of the Corps have also deployed. Where they wear uniforms like soldiers, but they volunteer as civilians, and they didn't, they go as, as volunteers, carrying no weapons, but often taking greater hazard by working in remote areas on many projects. We also have others who serve in the National Guard and Reserve and have been called up. The skills that they build and have maintained through the work in the United States homeland serves abroad and is the backup to the Department of Defense and to the nation to be able to do, to undertake big projects in places, and small ones in places like Iraq. We also provide that support from here. We do what's called teleengineering support from a distance, where we do the design and answer query work and analysis work from back here in Little Rock to support folks as far away as Iraq and Afghanistan. We also provide what is known as support, we call support for others. It's essentially providing engineering support of a variety of types to many other agencies, to include state, local, and other federal agencies. We have a continuing authority program which allows us to work with local governments on projects to find solutions, for example, to chronic flooding problems. Right now, we have working with one on Springfield, Missouri. We have partnerships with the Department of Energy, State Highways, Game and Fish, Department of Parks and Tourism, and others. I don't want to have time to really cover them all, and didn't intend to, but I did want to note the Pulaski County Bridge, Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge, which is currently, we are currently supervising the construction of over Murray Dam. And we have an agreement with the county, enabling, in essence, a free foundation, as well as an absolutely first-class, wonderful facility when it will be built. This is going very well. This will be the longest bridge in the country, specifically constructed for pedestrians and bicycles. Ribbon cutting ceremony will be on the 30th of September of this year. It's going to be a big event. We're going to have a lot of support and a lot of involvement, I know. The mayor's been very helpful in helping to bring this about. We're, we're even coordinating a scout campery to occur up there, and I'm on the scout committee for the council, and the mayor and I have been working with the landowners to help bring that about as well. We do a lot with the environment. We are an, an important environmental agency. We strive to meet the needs of both the human and the natural communities. For example, at our lakes and projects, we have world-class fishing, but it takes serious partnering efforts across many agencies to sustain it. Over 30 state and world records have been set from the catches of our core waters just here in Arkansas, including the one you see depicted here, a 40-pound, four-ounce brown trout caught in 1992 just below Gears Ferry Dam. We work to restore ecosystems that have been degraded by previous generations and to control damage that may occur from current growth. We're also involved with the restoration of defense sites of the past, cleanup where contamination has occurred. Arkansas has about 89 such sites, and they range from POW camps to munition testing range. The cleanup work that you see here is at the former Southwest Proving Ground down at Hope, Arkansas. Regulatory authorities, not one of the jobs that everybody wants to have, but there needs to be regulation in order to ensure success over time. And Congress has assigned to us the regulatory authorities principally contained with the two acts you see listed here. Because of our expertise in the developing of the navigable waterways, Congress tasked us in Section 10 of what is known as the Rivers and Harbors Act of 1899, to regulate the development along the nation's navigable waters, to ensure that we balance the purposes that are, our rivers are used for, so that they serve navigation, interstate commerce, and other functions, as Congress has directed. During the 1970s, Congress passed the Clean Water Act, Section 404, which charges the Corps with regulating the placement of dredge or fill in the waters of the U.S. Basically, we regulate the, we regulate most of the nation's wetlands. If you want to build something below the ordinary high watermark of a river or stream, we're in a wetland, you'll have to get a Corps permit. And I have an office filled with about a dozen good folks who work these issues quite hard. They cover a large amount of territory, and they try to work with each applicant to ensure the best possible presentation and the way ahead, to include in some cases, avoidance, go somewhere else, or mitigation, and creative ways to, to impact the environment the least while still fulfilling the purposes sought. It's a balancing test. We balance and work with others, such as the other environmental agencies, to find ways that can serve both the human needs and the natural needs, environmental protection, as well as the needs for development. Flood plans, we work with FEMA on flood control determinations and mapping, although they're the driving factor for policy in that area. It's not about the environment versus development, it's about looking after both. Economic success in our society provides the resource- Economic success in our society provides the resources that are necessary to help protect the environment. Environmental protection preserves the resources that we want from our environment and for our children. For example, North Little, the city of North Little Rock and Mamel have agreed in principle to the creation of what are called special area management plans for the White Oak Bayou. This is, this will take a consolidated approach to the protection of the bayou while allowing managed development to take place without exceeding delays for permits, individual permits, which we currently require in the absence of such a plan, where we have to evaluate each permit one at a time and treat it singularly. Instead, we can consolidate that by working together. And the two communities are working together on this issue. Now let me turn specifically to riverfront development. It's no secret to anyone here that the cities are rediscovering their waterfronts as the assets they really are. For the past few decades, cities across the country, like some you see here, have been transforming industrial and often derelict waterfront land into aesthetic, useful areas that attract people and business and are simply a great place to be. Downtowns can be revived while at the same time restoring and protecting natural water resources for our children. Riverfront parks provide opportunities for river and human health if properly planned. Attractive, sensible, commercial, and residential development can lure people back to downtown areas and help reduce urban sprawl. No secret here, of course, since North Little Rock has been in the forefront of much of this development over the many past years, and revitalization is here well underway. I'm impressed personally as well as professionally at how much has already been done and how much more is sought to be done. I know that it has not been easy for the council or the mayor to undertake this. These things take vision, they take money, they take partnership, public as well as private, and partnerships involving the many agencies at federal, state, and local levels. And few really appreciate how hard an effort that often is. I especially enjoy using personally the bike and walking path that is now along the riverfront, and I use it several times every week. I look forward to the completion of the loop once the pedestrian bridge is done and get the bridge, and also over the old railroad bridge by the Clinton Library. As an organization, we're committed to partnering with you in the further development of the riverfront. This is a downtown aerial photo, looking down, and what you can see is this yellow stripe that represents the channel, and the alignment of the Nav Channel there in yellow. It passes through the downtown waterfront. The bridges you see there are labeled in red, and Little Rock's riverfront park area is highlighted there in purple. The Presidential Park area is highlighted in blue. I show this because the central Arkansas waterfront, as with all urban waterfronts, presents its own special challenges and opportunities. Mother Nature, not the Corps of Engineers, placed the Nav Channel very near the South Bank, because it's on the outside of a river bend. This imposes some serious limitations on developing the south side of the river. This means that in order to maintain the navigation channel, that we will not permit extensive amounts of docks or piers or other things to jut out into the water from the south side on the, at the city of Little Rock. This is also be true, we can't move the channel now because we've got other infrastructure that's tied to it as well. The bridges are designed with the channel in mind. That is consequently why you see the bridges at the heights they are at. And what this does, what this means is that it becomes very difficult, as they move down through this area, the towboats have to stay on a path that's close to the Little Rock side. One bridge in particular, the I-40 Bridge, presents a special challenge because one of its piers is in the middle of the navigation channel. So there's a real hazard there, and we have concerns and work closely with matters that are often not obvious, like the amount of lights that are presented in that area, and how it may cause problems for the towboats. There are ways to work that, to have systems in which one can shut off the lights when the towboats are passing through. Now, on the other hand, while this still, none of these restrictions affect the city of Little Rock's plans to put in a game and nature fish center, nor some of the development they already intend at the River Market area that is on the land portion, it does also present opportunities for North Little Rock, such as the Maritime Museum, which has been started. My point, my ultimate point about this is that Little Rock and North Little Rock do not, should not compete in this development, because they should take, instead, I would recommend, take advantage of the opportunities presented by the uniqueness of each riverbank to complement both sides. And each will present a form of unique attractions that will be more than the sum of its parts. We in the Corps of Engineers stand ready to help work with you to help bring about this in a coherent way, taking into account both sides of the river as well as the, inside the river as well. Speaking of the Maritime Museum, my staff has been working with the museum officials to see if we can find some vessels excess to the Corps of Engineers' need that might be available to the museum. Recently, I offered the mayor two choices. Not surprisingly, the Admiral of the North Little Rock Navy wanted both. On the left is the motor vessel Wales. It's a 450 horsepower vessel owned by the Vicksburg District that will be surplus later this year. It's built 1935, 53 feet long, about 14 feet wide. On the right is the motor vessel Patoka. It will be surplus out of the Mobile District in October, a twin diesel, twin-screwed motor vessel built about 1956, accommodating a crew of 10. My staff is working the issue with that of North Little Rock and recently met with the Maritime Museum folks on the specifics. Dark Hollow. As you've probably heard by now, the news is not good regarding the proposed flood reduction project for the Dark Hollow area that for the past several years, we in the city of North Little Rock have been looking toward and have spending some significant money toward the evaluation. This would, conceptually, this was about replacing the existing tunnel under Redwood Street. The district has worked with the city extensively for many years on this project. A report will be ready for your review in July. Unfortunately, the benefit-to-cost ratio for this project is less than 1 to 1. What that means is that through the normal process of congressional preparation for funding, projects that have a less than 1 to 1 ratio are not normally funded by the Congress. As a matter of practice, though, the question of whether it's 1.1 or .9 may not be especially relevant. Given the nation's current budget trials, most projects are not being funded unless they have a 3 to 1 ratio of payback for the investment. The reason that the cost has risen has been principally because the cost of everything, especially construction, has risen over the past year or so. It is still, however, possible for Congress to fund the project, a cost shared project, if that is pursued and pursued through the members. This is not uncommon, but it is also one that competes for support with all other manners of projects that Congress funds. The study will report that no flood reduction measure could be identified that met the criteria, and we examined many, for federally cost shared projects through the normal process. The project write-up will also contain important and useful information about the impacts that flooding in that area can cause, and solutions, and a recommended solution should you choose to fund it or choose, or are able to get Congress to pursue funds in the future. Shops at North Hills. I have little new to report on shops at North Hills Project, other than the fact that it's still in court. This will be anchored by a Bass Pro Shop, and a hearing has been scheduled now, I've learned yesterday, or last week, that a hearing is now scheduled in the U.S. District Court for the 3rd of May. The Beltsboro Group continues to have the construction on hold pending the resolution of the lawsuit. The lawsuit is against me as the district engineer and against the Corps more generally. It's issued, the lawsuit has been undertaken because I, last April, I issued a Section 404 permit to permit the project to proceed. The lawsuit was filed, as a result, by a local environmental organization the following day. It was filed under the National Environmental Policy Act. That organization believes that I should have required an environmental impact statement before issuing the permit. That would have taken about three additional years for the project in order for it to proceed to construction. I made the decision that we had had sufficient environmental review and work and documentation, and had met all the requirements of the law, and that permit should be issued, especially mindful of the tremendous impact that such a project has on the community and the jobs at stake. Soon, the judge will get his chance to second guess my judgment. Numerous briefs have been filed by the Corps and by Beltsboro, as well as the organization, the environmental organization, and we expect a decision will take place probably this summer. Levies. Under FEMA's map modernization program begun in the late 80s, all the levies of the United States are eventually to be evaluated as part of a certification process. The certification process exists to see that levies were designed and constructed properly, that the risk-based analysis of the levy height is adequate and includes new information as a result of years of new weather information, and to evaluate the current condition and maintenance of levies through physical inspection. To date, FEMA has not funded the certifications, and we have no other funding currently available. This is a national problem, not a local problem, so it is getting a lot of aggressive attention at Congress. And there is money under consideration for a national level levy inventory over the coming couple of years. Eventually, certification money in some fashion will have to be found, either from local efforts or from national efforts. We do periodically inspect the general condition of levies throughout the area, but this is a fairly general inspection, and a more rigorous inspection would be needed to meet the certification standards. My staff and I have already certified the construction and design of the levies as being proper. Issues now are the new evaluation of their adequacy on a risk-based analysis as well as their current condition. In the absence of funding, we were only able to certify that the original design met the standards of the day. We have identified these issues to our national headquarters, and discussions continue at that level with FEMA headquarters staff. Mayor Hayes played a prominent role in this nationally, because, when he brought this to my attention, because I immediately brought, I was going to Washington the next week and met with the Director of Civil Works for the Nation, who then went and saw FEMA the next day. So you can credit Mayor Hayes with bringing this issue to national level of the table for further discussion. Another option we have discussed with FEMA Region 6 is to accept the levy owner, North Little Rock in this case, or third-party evaluation of flood hydrology and levy maintenance. This is difficult, too, because very few people want to certify levies and then take the risk and responsibility should there be problems. So there's a legal liability issue that stands in the way of that to a degree. We will continue our dialogue with FEMA and with others, and will inform you as more information becomes available. We share your interest and concern to ensure that proper certification is done so that accurate maps can be made, and where protection exists, flood insurance is not required where adequate protection exists. We are appreciative of the proactive approach taken by the city, and I'm prepared to talk in some detail and leave behind a couple of pages that discuss the specific conditions of the levies here in this area. The Little Rock District is a vital player, along with others, in the environment, economy, and security of Arkansas, Southern Missouri, and the nation. We take pride and pleasure in playing a role in central Arkansas on these and many other important projects. By continuing to work together, we look to enjoy smart, beneficial, and sustainable projects that will continue the transformation that much of which you began on the central Arkansas waterfronts and throughout the region. We look to continue to be a good partner with you. And I stand ready for any questions you may have.
Alderman Thomas?
I just want to thank him for the effort that Mike Biggs and others of your staff have done in trying to qualify that Redwood Ditch for funding, and I know for 40 years I've been working only two, and I'm hoping someday that the funds will be there, but I couldn't have asked any more help than Mike Biggs and those guys have done over there. A.J. Brown and others have been so helpful to us.
Thank you. I'll make sure they hear the compliment. Thank you.
Any other council member?
Colonel, again, we certainly appreciate your time and presentation. The Corps is a vital part of this city's life on a day-to-day basis. Obviously, you're very proactive with regard to our future. Want to underline our appreciation with your own work personally, in the attitude of trying to make things happen rather than find out why things shouldn't happen and act on that. So we are indeed fortunate to have Colonel Wally Walters and his daughter, a part of our community, his wife, is about to leave the Pentagon and go to Carolina's, to, what is it?
Fort Bragg.
Fort Bragg, North Carolina, and manage the medical facility there. So, you know, we hope your tenure continues to be as productive as it has been. We know in working in cooperation with you that we can't expect anything other than a fine opportunity for us to make things happen in central Arkansas and particularly North Little Rock. We appreciate it, and thank you very much for your presence.
I want to say one of, oops, okay. I just want to say one other thing, too. I mentioned to Mr. Biggs the other day that our East Broadway Project, Highway Project is being actually ready to begin, and that water, a lot of the water will go into that Redwood Ditch, and I don't know if that helps or hurt, but that is one of the ways that we'll dispose that water, is through that Redwood Tunnel down the river.
We know the Colonel will be out there with a bucket if something happens, and maybe a few bulldozers. Colonel, thank you again for being here, and we look forward to continuing to enjoy your presence while the Corps has you as a head of the Little Rock Office. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that you do and for the chance to present today. Thank you.
Charlie Baxter, I'm going to get you up for a few-minute commercial, not more than. We've got a real opportunity, then I'm going to go and share some exciting thoughts that Bob Gorman, our consultant, has with you, Charlie.
Thank you, sir. It's, I have with me tonight Dolly Brumsfeld, that's one of the League of Their Own players. You'll get to meet her in person if you come to Hayes Center Friday at 11:30. We're going to have a luncheon there. Tickets are $10, and it's the opportunity to meet some legends, there are three ladies that are going to be there, to talk about baseball during World War II, and their playing of that game, and keeping baseball alive during World War II. If you like baseball, if you believe in how women have helped to save that sport and helped our country, if you like history, you want to come be a part of this, because it's going to be a fun day. Tickets are $10. Lunch will start at 11:30. The bad news of that is that we're, good news is we're catering with Golden Corral, but I need a head count by Thursday afternoon so we can have lunch available for Friday. So if you'll buy tickets, I have some available tonight, they're available at the Hayes Center, and it'll be an opportunity of a lifetime to meet some ladies that are already in Cooperstown in the Baseball Hall of Fame, and these ladies are very, very special. I've had the opportunity, you may have seen them on Channel 4, they're going to be on Channel 11 later this week, and they're a special group with a great history. So come on down to the Hayes Center.
And play ball.
One more thing, Thursday night, we have an art show from 6:30 to 8:30 that's open to the public. There'll be 30 artists there showing their wares, and you can come down and look at the art and buy some art. So come to the Hayes Center.
All right, Colonel Walters' introduction to the river and the McClellan Current Navigation Project, Mr. Baxter's notes on baseball with our ballpark currently under construction. Let me add one more request, and that is if any council member is interested in visiting with the contractor, architect, constructions, activities, an update on the ballpark, we're scheduling an opportunity to do that at 6:00 P.M. Media obviously is also invited this Thursday down at the ballpark, so if you're in the neighborhood, please, well, first of all, just let our office know, let the mayor's office know if you're going to be able to do that. We can schedule other times. We want to keep everybody as informed as we can about what's going on at the ballpark. We're currently on schedule to open in less than a year now on the 5th of April, and we want to make sure that folks are able to keep up with it. So unless we don't get any response, there will be a tour, and we're asking any council member that wants to to let us know. We tried to schedule it, had a time sufficiently before dark and after the workday so that most of you could go. So let us know at my office, let Ms. Taylor know, and we'll look forward to having an opportunity to take a look at a work in progress. Now that we've talked about baseball, now that we've talked about the river, Bob Gorman, who this city council has been working with over the last year and a half, Bob, who already presented to us some of our dreams that are now in the process of coming true. While we can't see them, you see charts down there that are in front of us that reflect the ballpark on one, and a view looking upriver toward the ballpark on the other. That was done before the citizens of the community went to the polls on August the night, and now, you know, our ballpark is not quite there, but it's certainly on its way. We ask and retain Bob and his company to further the vision that sort of gave a generalized with pictures of the downtown area, by and large from the Barron Cross Bridge to the Presidential Library Bridge, and what we're going to see tonight is a bit more focused work, but recognizing that as we move forward, we move forward as one unified urban development that Mr. Gorman has helped us with. Bob, if you'd like to take the microphone... Bob, if you'd like to take the microphone and share with us your up-to-date reflection of our visions and see if that reflection is—comports with a lot of what the council may be excited about. And let me just add to this. I know that this afternoon Bob came into town and we did have sort of a warm-up session with some of the parties who are active in downtown development and there seemed to be a fairly broad basis from Lisa Farrell on the up riverside to Jim Glover on the down riverside and in-between of general excitement about what this is and we certainly hope the council pays an opportunity to look at what Mr. Gorman has tried to reflect in the will of the council and the community. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council. Thank you for having me back tonight. Some of you know that for the last couple of years, we've been looking at the whole waterfront. I think Colonel Walters said it really well in his comments that this is a tremendous resource with a lot of assets. Maybe one of the best assets is the flexibility you have on your side of the river to do development that can occur on the Little Rock side. You also have tremendous land resources because as you can see in the photograph, a great deal of the area between Broadway and the river is essentially a suburban environment that's undeveloped. And one of the things that we've been working with the council and the mayor on is the vision for the whole waterfront. Now I'm briefly just going to recap what we've been doing over the past two years and then focus in on the downtown core, which we've been looking at in more detail over the last six months predominantly because things are moving so quickly that we took a very generalized view when we were looking at this area, you know, a year and a half ago. And since that time, the ballpark is a reality. The Junction Bridge is being funded and will happen in the next year or so. There's a number of development proposals that are in the works in the downtown area. The City Landing with the submarine and the Hoga and some of the other boats are becoming a reality. So all of these things are happening so fast that what we originally thought was going to be a master plan for the next 15 or 20 years is probably a master plan that's really only going to be effective for setting out a vision that's happening very quickly and may build itself out over the next five to 10 years. So the mayor asked us to come back in and refocus on the downtown area. But just to kind of recap some of the things that are happening along the waterfront. When we originally did this plan, and this is a sketch of it, looking from essentially over the I-30 Bridge back towards the downtown, you can see the arena over in this location. We were hoping we might get a ballpark over here, but that was not anything more than wishful thinking at the time. We thought a good location for it was the site by the Broadway Street Bridge and in fact, that's where it wound up being located. There are developments in the works on the above Pike Street, west of Pike Street along the river, some private development concerns there. People are looking at a Marina Development on the river just north of the Broadway Street Bridge. As I said, the Junction Bridge is being funded as is the Presidential Bridge coming over from the library. So there's a lot going on in the downtown. The ships have moved into their final location on the waterfront as the first beginnings of the waterfront landing for the city. So there's a lot happening and we've sort of backed up and said, okay, let's take another look at what's going on in that core area of the downtown. We know that Main Street is starting to get revitalized with new shops and restaurants and things moving in there. How do we support that development, be respectful of what's happening in Argenta, and sort of build out the townscape from Broadway to the riverfront? There were a number of goals that were set out in this process and we worked with the mayor and a group of stakeholders in this process that included landowners and city officials. And one of the things that came out of that process was the desire to have a very dense, walkable urban environment. Now, we're not talking about New York City, but a real townscape, not big empty surface lots with isolated buildings, which is what we have now, but fill in those empty gaps and how do we get there? How do we do that? And what are the realities of making that happen? So we looked at that and one of the things that became clear very early on was the need to create critical mass. Critical mass is enough development opportunity in this four or five-block area that we're talking about. We're essentially talking about the zone from the arena to the new Ball Stadium, from Broadway to the river. Five to six square blocks of development, more or less. Can we create enough development opportunity to actually interest major developers, come into the downtown area and participate and invest and develop projects there? There also is clear opportunity for infill on a much smaller basis, but to make something happen of significance, we needed to get that critical mass and see if we had that opportunity in the downtown and we think we do. One of the other things which we think is really critical is establishing a sense of place. And what we mean by that is sort of a destination that is a recognizable place in people's mind, not a single building or a single park, but a destination. One of the great examples of a success story on an urban waterfront in the United States is Baltimore Zander Harbor. It was a derelict area. I'm sure Colonel Walters knows a lot about how far that's come in the last 30 or 35 years. It's now this vibrant people place filled with restaurants and shops and hotels and people are starting to live there. Developers are coming in and building housing. It's become a very vibrant waterfront community. That opportunity exists here in North Little Rock and we think that it's really important that we create that public environment, which is really the fabric that creates that sense of place, a sense of pride in the community. It's your place. It's identifiable by everyone in the region, perhaps even the United States. One of the things that's important as we move through this process is not to map out specifically what developers should do, but suggest what the vision is based on the goals and then develop a public framework within which that can happen. And that framework really consists of the streets, the open spaces, the linkages connecting uses that are already in the downtown. For instance, the Main Street environment connected to the river, the arena connected to the stadium, so that it becomes a very walkable environment. We also thought there were opportunities perhaps to enhance links to the river, which would require Colonel Walters to look at maybe punching through the levy at Main Street so you can get a direct shot from Main Street down to the river.
Yeah, the closer you can stay to the microphone, Bob, the better that everybody else can hear.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
I hate my—
Takes up pretty good, but—
Can I take this little guy off here? I like to walk around. Does that work?
Okay.
That's the right mic.
Oh. That's a TV mic.
Oh. Well, we don't want you to hear anything. Okay.
Tell you what, just in case—
No, I'm good. I'll stay here. But ultimately, at the end of the day, with all of these goals, we want this to be a place that people want to live in. You can talk about restaurants and shops and all of that, but at the end of the day, the success of your downtown is going to be if people live there. There are a number of issues that we looked at that are both pragmatic, which help realize this vision. And I'm not a traffic engineer, but this is really reflecting what came out of our process. You have very good access to the downtown, but there were certain issues that came out of this process. One was redirecting southbound I-30 traffic off of the Seventh Street exit and get them into the downtown and down Main Street earlier so that they're not bypassing all of that area and then coming in along the waterfront. Improving the westbound traffic between Broadway and Pike. There seems to be a bottleneck there with a railroad bridge. We can't widen that street, but there might be other ways that we can improve that access between Broadway and Pike and Pike and the riverfront Parkway. Discourage the short cutting and visitor parking in Old Argenta. As the Ball Stadium comes online, there'll be an issue of people parking in the neighborhoods to go to events at the stadium. How do we control that? There's lots of ways you can do that and we need to start to look into what some of the more successful ones are and how we can deal with that issue, which is going to be a natural issue that comes up as we develop in the downtown. Whenever you have attractions that draw lots of people from the region, there's always conflict with the people that are already there, so we need to sort that out. How do we use the next phases, the expansion of the trolley system, to direct development where we want it? You don't put trolley systems or transit systems in to serve existing demand because it's too difficult. It's already developed. We have the opportunity now to expand that system to the west and to the east and to the north, where we put those loops so that we can encourage development in the areas we want it as the expansion of the downtown moves forward. This is a little bit small for you to see, but this was the original master plan, which we completed about two years ago. Just to orient you, here's the arena. And for those of you who can't see this one, do you want me to turn around and do this as well or can everyone see this? The arena is right here, I-30 Bridge, Junction Bridge, Main Street Bridge. Here's the Ball Stadium site, Broadway. The Presidential Library is over in this location. So we looked at a very comprehensive master plan for the entire waterfront and as I said, this was before many of the things that are on the table now were even a dream in anyone's mind. But now we've got, you know, we've got the Ball Stadium, we've got this project being looked at, the Junction Street Bridge and a number of other things that I mentioned Parking is always an issue when you're dealing with this transformation of what is essentially a suburban environment. From Broadway to the river is a suburban environment, a few buildings and lots of surface parking, and that's basically the environment there. You can see in the photograph, a few landmark buildings, the U.S. Bank here, the building we're in, the City Hall right in this location, the arena over here. A lot of the rest of this is really open land. Parking is what allows us to really increase the densities to create this urban texture that we're looking for, this walkable environment, this rich mix of uses in a very tight area. Without the parking, it doesn't happen. You've got a suburban environment. And all of that requires some sort of public-private relationship to get those developments done. In almost every instance in the United States where these kinds of projects are being done, there's some sharing of those infrastructure costs between the public and the private developers who are coming in to do it for the benefit of the whole community. The public realm, this is that sense of place that I talked about earlier. Critically important that as we build this out, there is a plan and there are controls in place that as private developers come onboard, they meet certain standards in terms of their architecture, how they deal with the streetscape, how their buildings front on the street, what they do with parking, so that it all adds to the enrichment of the public environment and doesn't detract. One of the reasons we need a plan for downtown is to protect everyone's interest and value. We want the public environment to enhance the value, but we also want to protect the value of people who are investing and coming in and living in the downtown or opening a business. We also want to create spaces for programmed events and activities and festivals. And we want to strike a better balance between pedestrians and cars. Almost every city in the United States, cars are king. You park them, you drive them, people are secondary, they're shunted off to the side on narrow sidewalks. In the downtown area is the place where you really need to re-strike that balance between the needs of people and creating an amenity value on the street and the needs of cars. We're not going to get rid of the cars, they're here to stay, but we need to strike a better balance between the two. These are just a couple of quotes from the popular press and people who have been out on the forefront of this kind of activity for years. What's becoming very clear is that successful cities, cities that are really doing well on economic development front are the ones who have great lifestyles. And what do we mean by that? Richard Florida, the first quote up here is an author of a book that really talks about the most successful cities in the United States. He uses Austin, Texas as one example. They create multiple choices for both visitors and residents, great public environments, and they're the kinds of places that attract businesses because businesses need to attract good workforces that are drawn to places with schools, parks, great public environments, culture, lifestyle. You're on the verge of having that. You've got most of it in place already. We think this is the next step. The mayor of Charleston, South Carolina, Joseph Riley, in this last quote, gave a speech last year at the Peabody in Memphis. He's one of the most successful mayors in the country in redeveloping his city, Charleston, South Carolina. Says if you invest in the public environment, the money follows. The tax base comes. It's about creating beauty and quality of life and the quality of life in our country is really dependent on the quality of life in our cities. It's important. We need to do it and you have the opportunity to do it here. So what does the plan really tell us? We wanted to create a long-range strategy, which at the end of the day might not be very long-range because there's forces at work that are really looking at this core area of North Little Rock. But we want to create that dense, diverse, attractive townscape to start to reinforce the things that are already here in culture and sports. We want a place that provides employment, hospitality, and residential opportunity. Want to bring people down here to live. You've got a great waterfront, great parks, and a great view. You've got a better view than Little Rock has. It's a wonderful opportunity and that's why people are circling this area, looking at land right now. I'm quickly going to go through this. This was really designed to talk about specific issues in our meeting this afternoon. But in the effort to create critical mass, we wanted to reach a certain threshold and that threshold is about 200,000 square feet of development opportunity in the core at street level. And we think we're able to achieve that. And I know you don't know what you're looking at here, but this is the City Hall right here. This is Main Street. This is the arena. Second Street going over to the stadium is in this location and I'll show you this plan in a second. I'm just going to go quickly through these because they're specific-issue graphics. But this is the core area. So here you have I-30, the arena, the ballpark. We're really looking at this area between Broadway and the two sports venues, Main Street. And one of the things we're suggesting is to really reinforce the public environment by taking Second Street and creating a crosstown sports street promenade. Heavily balanced towards pedestrians, a new address for the downtown, linking the two sports venues and not precluding cars, but really make it mostly a pedestrian environment. A new link to the River Park from Main Street down to the City Landing area here where the submarine is. This is the Junction Street Bridge Park where the landing will come down in front of the arena, an area we're calling Arena Square in front of the arena, which by day would be surface parking and on weekends and nights could be a festival location. And then lastly, what we're suggesting is a new park square between Main and Second off Main Street, between Broadway and Second off Main Street. This is showing that open space network. Again, here's the city council or the city hall here, the arena in this location, the I-30 Bridge and so forth. So you come down Main Street, we're suggesting a new public square here of about one acre that would become that new focal point for the downtown, a gathering place, a great address for all the new development around it and then links back over to down Main Street to the riverfront landing and the park. Here you can see the Junction Bridge coming across with the landing park that's being suggested in front of the arena.
Yeah, I might add that the building permit's been taken out for the enclave about 10 days ago, so I'm hopeful that that will start within the next, well, sometime next month.
This graphic was really designed to show the amount of retail dining and entertainment possibilities there are on the street centered really around this— possibilities there are on the street, centered really around this new park square and Main Street and Second of about 200,000 square feet. Jumped ahead there, this is showing residential opportunities, which are essentially over-the-store kinds of residential loft development, much like you see the kind of thing that's happening across the river, where you have commercial development on the street, keep the street lively, and you've got flex space, residential, and development up above. In this case, we're talking mainly about four or five stories, not high-rise, in keeping with the general character of the Main Street area and the older part of town, with one or few exceptions as we get down toward the river, creating kind of a gateway, taller buildings as you come across the Main Street Bridge with a residential building and a hotel condo building on the river. So the red is showing residential opportunity in that same scheme. This is a little bit too small for you to see, but this is just focusing in on the core again, but I'm going to go to the next slide because that really shows it a little bit better. Here you can see this park square of approximately an acre, a very flexible new focal point for downtown that can host festivals, a great public square when there's nothing going on, a new address for all the development around it, and a signature element for the downtown in the core of the development. The River Park's great, but it's really an edge. We wanted something right in the heart of the downtown. And this just shows a sketch of what that might look like hovering just to the west of Main Street. You can see the, again, this is City Hall, the arena, the I-30 Bridge, Junction Street Bridge, Main Street coming into Main Street here with the trolley line, and the Second Street Promenade going over to the Ball Stadium, U.S. Bank is one of the few buildings in this picture that exists. Most of the rest of this, well, this is Municipal Services Building here, and that one block of development where the chamber is. The rest of that is essentially area that's really ripe for redevelopment.
You've got the enclave, again, I hate to belabor that, but that's...
This is that proposal adjacent to the arena, a major residential project, four or five stories, I believe it is.
Four stories.
Four stories.
First story is parking.
So you can see, we're really trying to keep the level down and still get the development opportunity you want in about a four or five-level zone throughout most of this. In fact, some of it is two-level, three-level, this is four or five, and then when you get down to the water, maybe some taller buildings down there. But really, sort of a transition of the waterfront with just a few opportunities for some taller things as you get down towards the water, preserving the view from the arena to the skyline of Little Rock. We left a corridor through there, which was one of the early goals of the original master plan, and we respected that. Showing in this location, here, here, and here, the opportunity for parking, which would support the main address streets, which would be Main and Second. So it's a lot to chew on, and it's only a vision, and it will change as it gets developed, but it's a start in terms of letting people that are interested in this area know what the possibilities are and know what can be supported, how you would park it, what kinds of a public environment we might create. And so that's where we stand today.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I think, in fact, I know it's certainly an exciting dream, and one of the things that I asked Bob a little earlier today was, you know, with his knowledge, if I can repeat a little bit of what I may have said a meeting or two ago, many of us do recall that Bob Gorman and his efforts went into the River Market in its early stages, and obviously reality took place there. You know, a lot of what we've seen in some of his work with the ballpark and other activities with the involvement of the council and without any doubt the voters, you know, that's becoming a reality. The arena was one of the early entries to the scene, the most recent scene, and now a lot of buzz is very much happening with regard to the remainder of these things. You know, I know we've taken a couple hours here in going over different things, so if there's any, if there's not any comments by the council, what I intend to do is, you know, is to bring this back and see if this council in some kind of a vote, not in a specific way, but a general way, would think that this is something that they'd like to see our downtown become. And we have done a lot of drawing, and Bob can comment on this, but, you know, I am both surprised, a little bit pleased, a lot, that a lot of what we've seen in drawings and dreams has become bricks and mortar and reality.
One of the things that we try to do in our work, and if you looked at market studies to try to conjure up what's possible, it would have told you that the River Market and all of the stuff that's going on over there was impossible. Market studies are only useful to a certain point. What happened in the River Market and what happens in a lot of downtowns is that you create a market where there wasn't a market. And while this might look fanciful and crazy to some of you, we actually have test-run this plan past real-world developers from other cities who now have an interest in maybe coming here and talking more about it. These are not easy projects to do, they're very difficult, parking is always the stumbling buck, but they are possible. You know, they're selling million-dollar condos across the river, and if you had said to that, anyone, that that was going to happen 10 years ago, they would have run you out of town. So this, this or something like this is possible on this side of the river, and something like this should happen. We don't care if you do exactly our plan, but do something.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much, Bob, and thanks for coming down again and keeping a lot of us with you when you go back up to Maryland. We appreciate it. Let me hit a couple points. One, I want to acknowledge our municipal clerk, Ms. Whitby, and reflect on recognizing that we've got a week that's coming up, the week of April 30 through May 6 is Municipal City Clerk's Week, and I would encourage, that's all through the nation, I'm assuming, and everyone knows how much we appreciate our clerk and all of what she and her staff does. You know, give her a pat on the back, maybe take her out to lunch during that week, whatever that we can do. And in addition to her staff, we're very proud of them and the help they give this community. So April 30 through May 6, thank your city clerk wherever you are, because we very much thank ours. One final short presentation, Margaret, five minutes or less, on our city cleanup that's coming up, May the 6th, I believe. Let me confirm whether I'm right or wrong, and you got five minutes. If you're there much longer, I think we're going to throw out some extra trash.
Okay, Alderman Parker, you think we can do this in five minutes?
Let's go.
Fast forward everything. I'm going to invite Wayne Rathbun up. Wayne has given up his son's ballgame to be with us tonight, and Wayne has a presentation to make to us. We are planning the North Little Rock, Great North Little Rock cleanup Saturday, May the 6th. There's still time this week to register teams. If you have not registered your team, you need to do so, and you do that by contacting my office, and most everybody I think knows how to get in touch with me, and I think the media probably has run our phone number, so please do join us Saturday, May the 6th. We've heard a lot tonight about the desirability of living in a clean, beautiful environment. We all know that tourists and prospective businesses and prospective new residents care a lot about the environment. We care a lot about our environment here, and we do have a tremendous community with a tremendous sense of pride. So I want to invite Wayne Rathbun. Wayne is the senior manager for Waste Management here. Wayne's got a presentation, Alderman Parker, and the mayor, he's got a check to present to you. This is a check that Wayne will tell you a little about, but it does represent a wonderful partnership between government, business, and an organization called Keep America Beautiful, which our city is beginning to be tied more closely with.
Morning, Mayor, or afternoon, I apologize, good evening, fellow Alderman. Waste Management's proud to be a partner in this community. We've been here three years with recycling. We've also had a partnership on the disposal side handling the disposal needs of the city with our landfill at Tupine. But we've got the cleanup coming May 6th, it's our third year of involvement, and we want to present a check in the amount of, I brought a big one, fancy one, in order, in $3,000 towards the cleanup on May 6th for the city of North Little Rock. Y'all want to see that?
I'm asking Alderman Parker, John Parker, to accept that on behalf of the city. We're very appreciative of his efforts as he continues to make this a special item of business on his agenda, and John, we thank you, we thank Waste Management and Ms. Powell of our office. The $3,000, I'm sure, can assure you will be spent wisely.
Now, Alderman, I'm going to have to have that one back. I'll give you the real one for this one, okay?
You may want to hand that to Bob Sisson, Alderman.
Come back.
Alderman, you may want to hand that check to Bob Sisson, so we can sure...
He may want to keep that.
You may want to keep it, but don't lose it. All right, now it's our responsibility.
All right, we got to fast-forward our Dog and Pony Show. Jim Billings, could you please roll that beautiful footage that you have for us? I wanted to thank the Police Department and Rusty Gartrell. We are going to produce, we're going to produce some copies of this for our television media, and I want to compliment Rusty, who does the Video Services Police Department. Are you ready back there with the 62nd Public Service Pod?
While they're rolling that, Ms. Powell, would you get that stand out of my line of sight, please?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. All right, roll it, please.
Rusty wanted me to know if you all liked that. He was not able to be here because he's working on the submarine video, but I think it's wonderful. Mayor and City Council, we're also going to be producing some posters. These are just some prototypes, but they are basically going to be taken from the PSA, and so we're going to do a coordinated campaign this year with that PSA through the media, through newspaper ads, as well as through posters in businesses and schools. So the message is, it's your responsibility, it's the law, and it's a privilege to be in a, to live in a community that is beautiful, and it's our responsibility to keep it that way. I have also worked with the city departments to produce a Citizens' Resource Guide. It will be reprinted in the North Little Rock Times this week, and it'll be on a new city website. Alderman Parker, come on down, bring your things in, and we'll talk, let him talk a little bit more about that. But the Citizens' Guide is basically just a kind of a primer on some of the things that citizens can do and that the city does to team up together to make the city more beautiful. I think there's some information in there that some of you might even be a little pleased and surprised to read, so hopefully it'll be helpful guide to the citizens to know what the city does, where they can call, and also encourage them to call and report things that will help make our city a more beautiful place to live. The rest of the program is up to John Parker.
You got about 10 seconds, Alderman.
10 seconds, okay, here we go. This is litter. We can recycle this once a week at a curbside.
Kind of get a little over closer to the microphone, if you would. There we go.
This is litter we recycle every week with our trash pickup. Waste Management's picks this up. This is litter also when it's not properly disposed of. However, this is a different kind of litter. And this, we provide pickup along with garment bags from the cleaners and so forth. You can take it to 12th and Willow, is the address, where you recycle hazardous waste material here in the city of North Little Rock. Also, if you happen to be a diabetic or someone that has to use needles to properly dispose of these items that are dangerous to others, you have to put them in one of these little containers, and these will be available at, I understand, at pharmacies and so forth where you purchase them. So when you put your needles in these containers, you can also take them to the same waste disposal location at 12th and Willow. They'll have signs like this available at the pharmacies to indicate that these are free for your use, and you can probably dispose of that item. We have, as Margaret mentioned, a citizen group of people that are concerned about litter on a day-to-day basis, not just once a year during our spring cleanup, but round the clock, 24/7, 365 days a year. It's called Keep North Little Rock Beautiful, and that committee is working with the national affiliate of Keep America Beautiful to get their accreditation. I think my 30 seconds is up. I just want everyone to know that we're serious about keeping North Little Rock beautiful, and we ask for your participation and help in teaching our young kids how to keep it clean.
If folks wanted to join us in the cleanup, where would they come?
They need to contact our office so we can have enough supplies for them, but they will come to 6th and Main Police Substation. We do always have a few groups that show up that morning, that's okay, too.
And what time?
8:30 in the morning till about 12 noon is when the teams will be out cleaning. They'll come in for a pizza lunch. Blue Bell Ice Cream is donated ice cream, and we've got a really good, a good time planned, a lot of door prizes and things. So we'll have a celebration after we get things cleaned up, and then we're really going to work throughout the year to keep it clean.
Thank you very much, and we're asking everybody to participate in not only on May 6th, but 365 days a year. It's easy to do individually, but when others put burdens on others, that makes it difficult. With that, unless there's any other preliminary comments, let's go to the agenda, Ms. Whitby.
Resolution 0657, Alderman Thomas.
All right, please.
A resolution delaying the electric rate increase to North Little Rock electric customers pending receipt of data on actual cost of wholesale purchased power.
I'd like to move to adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson.
Whoops.
Point of order. This being a resolution, since we had adopted originally under an ordinance, can this actually affect the ordinance?
No, it has no legal bearing. At most, it expresses an intent.
Let me, you know, I know that we're going to deal with this...
Thomas, would you hold this until after we have addressed 0637? Well, what I intended for just the intent, we'd have to come back with something.
We've got a deadline coming up. Anyway, I think what the city attorney has told us, it has no, it has no opinion effect on it, other than an intent, intent, and while I fully support the intent, I'd probably rather deal with 0637.
Alderman, unless there's an objection, I know that this is sort of the heart. We're going to have to decide tonight, you know, whether to go forward with the increase, which is currently programmed for beginning on, you know, May 1. And that, the action, whatever we do, you know, may have a direct bearing on this resolution. So unless there's a strong objection, I appreciate you holding it until after we deal with the ordinance itself.
Well, of course, that's what I agreed last time, to hold it for the, to this council meeting, and then if it was the thought or the intent of the council to do that, then I'd come back with an ordinance making it effective.
We...
We can vote on, I'm going to pass anyway, I mean, on the...
On the motion?
Gibson.
Passes.
Bryant.
Passes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
I'll pass.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Uh, the mayor chooses to, not to vote.
Motion fails.
Uh, let's, Alderman, I think, you know, that hopefully, you know, this council has been weighing very, very strongly and very difficultly and with a great deal of, of time directed toward, you know, the public comments. So, you know, I think this is the opportunity for us to deal with this and, and, uh, now we have Alderman Gibson's legislation that's the next in line. Unless there's an objection, would you please read the next act, action item or item?
Yes, sir.
This is an ordinance repealing ordinance number seventy-eight-oh-three and amending electric rates for the North Little Rock Electric Department customers, second reading.
Mayor, I'd like to offer an amendment to that, please, at this point, rather than taking it to the third reading. In the, uh, heading, which we normally don't amend, after the, after the number seventy-eight-oh-three, delete everything down through, uh, the semicolon in front of declaring.
Wait a minute, what, say this again?
In the title.
All right.
Delete section two and the blank attachment to it. Renumber section three to two and four to three.
Second.
Motion made in second. Let me, uh, let me tell you what I understand this, well, Alderman Gibson, I, I know that, uh, you know, I think we've all had a chance to, to, to think very long and very hard on this and, and, and I'll certainly defer to Alderman Gibson to explain what this does. Uh, Alderman Gibson?
Well, you know, for, as, as, you know, not only we had the two public hearings, I've been in several meetings out across the city that were neighborhood associations and, and trying to explain particularly what was happening with electric rates. And as I said last meeting and the meeting before that and even earlier tonight, we need to address, readdress these issues. Uh, we need to look at other revenue sources. We need to look at reducing contribution of the general fund, which would reduce the rate. Uh, we need to have a very sincere discussion about what we may be able to do about reducing the overall city budget without compromising public safety. And what I would hope out of this is that once we find out all the details, an open discussion, we develop a plan that would reduce the residential increase to the neighborhood of twenty percent over where Energy Arkansas's current rates are. And that's the goal I have in mind. And so let's go back to, to phase one, let's repeal the original ordinance and start all over again. And that is my motion, or that's my amendment to my original legislation.
Any other comments? Uh, let me just indicate that I support what Alderman Gibson's, uh, doing. Uh, I, 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 I do acknowledge that people sometimes feel that their comments aren't worthwhile, uh, but I think this council, if there's any group that I've ever dealt with that doesn't very sincerely and weigh very heavily the comments that made at the, at the microphone, as well as those comments that are made, uh, in, in the stores and the parks and, and, uh, in every, virtually every place that we go. I do not think that this council, uh, acted inappropriately. Uh, I think, you know, what was done with the original legislation was a sincere effort to try to minimize the impact as much as, as, as possible on what is going to be a very difficult, uh, decision for this city to, to, this city council to make in this community, uh, to be able to shoulder. And, and, and all of the comments, most I would say, you know, certainly went to the, uh, the core of, of, of helping us try to make that decision. And that decision, by this decision, is still out there. Uh, that's, if the council supports this amendment as well as adopting the, the ordinance, will indeed be putting off the rate increase. But putting off is, is not anything other than, uh, looking forward to making a decision that's going to be extremely difficult. With that, Alderman Thomas?
I, I guess I just ask him to explain the difference in my resolution and this ordinance here. What was the difference?
This was, this one is a ordinance which you can only amend an ordinance with an ordinance. What this does is simply repeals the ordinance seventy-eight-oh-three that we passed, which was the ten and ten increase in electric rates.
Alderman, as I understand it, trying to, to-
Mayor, he had to finish up the question.
Well, I, I guess the point I was trying to make that, the, uh, my thought was that we'd delay it until we know what the, uh, rates are gonna be, and that's what you're planning on here?
Oh, yes. And, and I will, when we get through with this, since I voted on the prevailing side of R-oh-six-fifty-seven, I'll ask it to be called and addressed at that point. Which is your legislation.
And I think that's one of the factors that, you know, has certainly gone into the, uh, at least my support of this legislation, uh, as well as the continued progress of the Electric Department to look toward making a recommendation. I didn't like hearing what I heard from Mr. Gertz in saying that it was seventy dollars, uh, perhaps up to seventy-five dollars a megawatt hour. That news I didn't like, but, you know, this news we're gonna get good or for good or bad in a very short period of time. With that, on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
News Ben Roos placed on his third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency? Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On May, I'd, having, having voted on the prevailing side on R-oh-six-fifty-seven, I'd like to request that piece of legislation be recalled.
Second. On the motion?
Hold on a second.
This is a little different, I know.
Drew me a curve ball.
I know that. I apologize.
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Now, we gotta, in fact, we gotta re, do we have to reread it?
I think you just called it back. It's back on the floor now. Would you please reread it and then it'll be right?
Legislation.
Oh, yeah, I assume you want it reread?
Yes, I would like it.
It's back on the floor. Would you please reread it by title?
A resolution delaying the electric rate increase to North Little Rock electric customers pending receipt of data on actual cost of wholesale purchased power.
Move for adoption.
I'm, I'll second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Jordan is in the audience. Uh, Robert, would you raise your hand for us? Stand up and let us say hello. Uh, we appreciate your, uh, willingness to serve on the Planning Commission, a very important part of the city, uh, very, uh, important decisions are made by that body. And we know that your contributions will greatly enhance its decision-making ability. Thank you very much. Next item?
Resolution oh-six-fifty-nine, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Don Chambers to the North Little Rock Planning Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-six-
Uh, no, Don, I don't see him in the audience. Uh, if he's watching at home, we thank his past service. He, uh, really goes the extra mile and we appreciate him for his willingness to continue to serve. Thank you, Don. Next item?
Resolution oh-six-sixty, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Thomas Marr to the North Little Rock Historic District Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-six-sixty-one, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution amending two thousand and six annual action plan to decrease project funding amounts in accordance with the reduction in the two thousand and six CDBG entitlement amount to the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bowman, come up to the microphone real quick and, and make sure we all know why we're doing this.
As I mentioned, I guess a couple of times ago, we received roughly seven percent or nine percent less this year of community development block grant funds. And so in doing that, we had to make some changes in our projects for two thousand and six. And that's what these, that's what this is.
I know, I asked you and I'm sure you answered, why, why, is there a reason that we received seven percent less?
Uh, nine percent less.
Nine percent.
Uh, the, the administration, uh, cut community development block grant funds.
And what are they, I think we've got another resolution that, uh, is, is hopefully gonna address perhaps even a much greater cut.
That's true. I think they're, they're proposing twenty-five percent cut for next year.
All right. Any other questions? Has a motion been made in second and on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution oh-six-sixty-two, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Uh, yes, Ms. Bowman?
Ms. Bowman? Ms. Bowman, some of us are struggling to get projects underway now and to pay for those projects based on a year-to-year allocation. Uh, would it be possible or, or could we consider reallocating the money, uh, to the projects? Say, and I'll, I'll give you a, for instance, if, if, uh, you know, if I wanted to delay my Wood Street project, uh, for one year and, and provide that money to another ward to finish their project in turn with the understanding that next year I would be able to get their allocation so I could fully fund my project. You know, and to be quite honest with you, you know, right now we're struggling because there's simply just, there's not enough money, but you know that.
Sure, sure, yeah, we would have to probably amend, amend the plan, but that would be possible, sure.
So if, if we could come to an agreement between ourselves, since the Democratic reporter's gone, regarding that issue, then we, we could, could-
Mm-hmm, yes.
Commit it to writing and then have a hearing. We would have to have a hearing, wouldn't we?
Yeah, we'd probably have to advertise, advertise a public hearing because if you didn't have that project this year, we, we had it as an approved project, but that would, that would, we could do that.
Okay. Could we do it prior to September or should we do it prior to September if in fact we have that inclination to do that?
Yeah, whenever you decide, if you decide to do that, just let me know, then we'll, we'll start the process. We need to start the process immediately.
The only qualification that I might put on the table is if the administration is successful now, I will say that the Senate has voted to restore the funding. Uh, it's now gonna be in the House, but I just offer a word of caution that if that twenty-five percent reduction goes into effect, there may not be an ability to immediately return that.
Don't tell him that because I want his money on a project to finish up one of mine and, and we'll give it back to him next year.
And it'll make us all work harder to see that the House goes along with the Senate.
And, and we'll work on it.
I just wanted to point that out, though.
I realize, and I guess, you know, Ms. Bowman has talked, has talked to Mr. Height and I about allocating, uh, some of our drainage funds in order to complete the Wood Street project. I think about eight, well, almost ninety thousand, and now it'd be another, another ten on top of that. And, and while we're not sure, well, we don't have that much money left. Uh, you know, Mr. Gibson is gonna have to allocate some of his money and I, and I, I don't know about Ward Two or, or Three, but I do know, uh, you know, that it's a problem getting these projects complete at this point.
Mr. Witcher, we have, I don't know how much money we've stuck in the Thirty-Fifth Street project out of Ward One drainage funds, but it's probably half of the project. And we'd like just a little bit finishing it.
Thirty-Fifth Street?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's just one of those that's been there. I mean, this was a, this is a three or four-year project. We have to do it two blocks at a time, and that's not the way you really wanna do something, but that's the only way you could do this one. And, and it's, it's, uh, it's made a major change in that neighborhood already, what we've been able to do.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, next item?
Resolution oh-six-sixty-two, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to accept the donation of a boat and trailer from Thomas and Phyllis Benton.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Alderman Gibson passes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item?
Resolution oh-six-sixty-three, Mayor Hayes.
I believe we got an amendment to that at some point.
Yeah, we do. Let's go ahead and call it and get a motion.
A resolution, a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses and other structures located at two oh-four East Fourteenth Street in the city of North Little Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Get a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Is there a second? Now I need a motion to amend?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to amend. I think you were provided with a, an alternate copy. The only thing that does, it corrects the address. The correct address is two oh-five, not two oh-four. Uh, and, uh, that's all the amendment does. On the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Mayor, did we-
We need a public hearing.
Yeah. And what I was asking is, uh, is, is that that typo came out, now did the notice go to the wrong address? Are, are we proper in notice? Yes, ma'am.
The notice went to the right place. Um, we accept the condemnation, everything's fine. He hired us to demolish the building. I went in this morning to get a demolition permit and that's when the typo was found.
Okay, so nobody's objecting to, okay, well, we appreciate it, uh-
For the record, can we have her state who she is?
Yeah, come, uh, would you come back, uh, come on back up? That's what I'm getting ready to do, and I'm going to let this be a part of the public hearing. So, I'm going to go ahead and call a public hearing on the condemnation of 205 East 14th Street, the owner Willie Chisholm. And now, a public hearing, can you state your name and repeat your comments?
I'm Kaylin Wilcox, operation manager of Interstate Landscaping, a contracting company out of North Little Rock, Arkansas, that Willie Chisholm has hired to demolish the property. I went in this morning to get a permit to demolish the property. That's when the typo was found.
We appreciate it. Any other comments from anyone else regarding this matter? Public hearing is now adjourned.
Move for adoption.
Motion made to adopt as amended, second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Resolution 0664, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution supporting $4.3 billion in federal FY 2007 funding for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Resolution 0665, Alderman Whicher?
Call it, please.
A resolution establishing an advisory sign committee for the City of North Little Rock.
I'll second that. You've got a blank to fill in, though.
Okay. Mayor, the reason that blank is in there is because I didn't know how many folks you wanted to deal with.
Alderman, I'll deal with however many you think would be the best way to constitute your commission.
How about eight?
That's fine.
Okay.
No, seven or nine.
Seven?
Yeah, let's make it an odd number.
Seven, seven will work.
All right, motion to amend by inserting the number seven. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
On the motion to amend by inserting the number seven where the space is blank, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Ordinance 0643, Alderman Whicher?
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance allowing especially used for an indoor summer gymnastic day camp in the I-2 zone for certain real property located at 4101 Richards Road in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
News Ben Roos placed on second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing especially used for an indoor summer gymnastic day camp in the I-2 zone for certain real property located at 4101 Richards Road in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
News Ben Roos placed on his third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing especially used for an indoor summer gymnastic day camp in the I-2 zone for certain real property located at 4101 Richards Road in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Ordinance 0644, Alderman Parker?
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance to reclassify certain property located in the area west of Council Massey Road and north of Collins Industrial Place in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from the present I-2 to C-2, C-3, and all four classifications by amendment ordinance number 7697 of the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Ben Roos placed on second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
In order to reclassify certain property located in the area west of Council Massey Road and north of Collins Industrial Place in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from the present I-2 to C-2, C-3, and all four classifications by amendment ordinance number 7697 of the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
News Ben Roos placed on third reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
In order to reclassify certain property located in the area west of Council Massey Road and north of Collins Industrial Place in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from the present I-2 to C-2, C-3, and all four classifications by amendment ordinance number 7697 of the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
On the question?
Quick question. I know there's Bob sitting in the audience. I'm assuming this was...
Bob Holloway, you want to come to the microphone, Bob, and tell us what we're, I think many of us know, but tell us what we're doing, why we're doing it.
I'm Robert Holloway, and I'm the engineer on this project. This is a project that's being developed by the Lindsay Development Company. They have developed 25,000 apartments in, I think, nine states, nine states, and they own every one of them, had never sold one, so they're, they plan to be a good neighbor and plan to keep all these apartments. There has been some question by some of the Malmell residents I met this afternoon at 5:00 with several of them. They have no objections. They're very glad they've got a golf course next to them rather than industrial. So, this is really a nice thing for the City of North Little Rock, and it's an extraordinary facility.
I just might add that I've had the pleasure to know and work with Jim Lindsay from my last few years of law school, and I have been, as I cross his trail, have been encouraging him to find some North Little Rock real estate. He and I had a chance to visit about a week ago, week and a half ago, and he responded that he is equally as glad that he's found some North Little Rock real estate, and we look forward to a very quality development, and Lindsay Properties or Associates, or whatever the proper name is, to house, how many units?
552.
And with that, let's get a motion for adoption on final.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway.
Motion made and seconded, and why don't you introduce our friend, too?
Yes, this is Kim Fugai from the Lindsay Development Company.
And we had a chance to meet in your office about three, four weeks ago, it seems like. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
Before we go on, we look forward to helping you turn a shovel, cut a ribbon, but please
don't ask me to hit the first ball off the tee at that nine-hole court, because you'll need to be somewhere far away if that occurs. Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you very much. I wanted to say, it's great in our ward when we, I don't know whether you call it downzoning, but the c zoning come from I-2 to residential, I really, really appreciate it.
We're looking forward to it. Welcome. Next item?
Ordinance 0645, Alderman Parker?
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance accepting annexation of lands commonly described as lands to be titled the Riverview Business Park Annexation to the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and making Riverview Business Park a part of the City of North Little Rock, second reading.
News Ben Roos placed on second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Whicher?
Yes.
In order to accept an annexation of lands commonly described as lands to be titled the Riverview Business Park Annexation to the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and making Riverview Business Park a part of the City of North Little Rock, third and final reading.